All right, Mayor Brian Lewis. Council President Roger Perry.
Yeah.
Councillor Jeff Hensley.
Yeah.
Councillor Adina Oliveras.
President.
Councillor Joseph Parsons.
Sir.
President, I can't afford Mr. Mayor, what do you have? All right, Mayor Brian Lewis. Council President Roger Perry.
Yeah.
Councillor Jeff Hensley.
Yeah.
Councillor Adina Oliveras.
President.
Councillor Joseph Parsons.
Sir.
President, I can't afford Mr. Mayor, what do you have?
Sarah, I have a lot of local paper. Is this an executive meeting or is it like?
It's a, it's a work, how do you do, it's a work session, so there's not really public participation, but it is open to the public.
Okay.
The meeting is gonna be, it is live streamed on YouTube, so you can watch after as well.
Awesome, okay, thanks.
Alrighty, so we're here tonight because we have to make some painful decisions to deal with the results of a natural disaster. And that our wells are not producing nearly enough water to meet demand. We have almost completely maxed out our sixty-four thousand dollar budget for water. So in order to get to a full hundred thousand, we need to basically find forty thousand more. And I've identified about thirty thousand dollars in a mix of cuts using our contingency, some unanticipated funds, and having a higher budget surplus at the end of the last year than expected. That will allow us to make these cuts and get thirty thousand of it. And the other ten thousand of it can come either from cutting our enhanced surplus or from adding new fees for water. And in adding new fees for water, the number we, I were looking at internally was nine cents per gallon. That works out to about the actual cost of water hauling. And the idea would be that for everybody who uses more than five thousand gallons, then every gallon over that they have to use, they end up paying nine cents per gallon, and that will be extended through the water restriction period. We did get some good news this morning from our Public Works Director. He believes that the wells are picking up enough that we will be done with water hauling by the end of the month. So, Malcolm Wood, cross your fingers, everybody. What was it? Oh, sorry, I thought I could.
He gave her, you heard it.
Oh, good. Yeah, my ears aren't doing as good these days these days. That's kind of what I wanted to go with tonight. And I did want to make sure that there was a picture of where we are financially compared to this year. Why did we have such a large surplus left over at the end of last year? How can we use it appropriately? What kind of money is going to be left over when we're done making cuts and everything else? There are a variety of cuts that I had looked at and made lists. So I looked at our non-critical things like parks or community relations, which is usually means for things of. Making dinner during a budget meeting and buying a plaque for our city councillors whose terms ended, that kind of thing. Those, those non-critical cuts, and I looked at making, non-critical line items, I looked at making about ten percent cuts just kind of across the board to those things. Let's see. So.
I guess not, would that be, is okay to ask question during, would it be things like reimbursing for attending meetings on behalf of the city? For mileage?
Sure, that was not identified, is it?
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I'm still not doing it, obviously.
Yeah, I get it. Yeah, and I know personally, I'm looking at that too. I, I decided to pay for my own membership in the Cities Reporters Association this year, just to take that burden off the city. The, what else we got there? So those cuts, there wasn't a lot that we could do with that act of just kind of taking ten percent off. That left us with forty-one hundred we could use. We ended up having a much smaller safe premium this year, just kind of unexpectedly. Because of, I don't remember exactly the reason they gave me, but I just got the last invoice and they only owe like three hundred fifty more dollars. And that means we have twenty-four hundred left over that we can use for water, so we're gonna use it for water. I wanted to suggest that my hours get cut to twenty per week from thirty between February and March. Because during the legislative session, I will be working in Salem. Last year, or this year, I worked twenty hours a week. That was, one day I spent the Capitol thirty hours at Soderville, and the other ten hours I ended up working evenings. So the idea would be that we'd cut it down to twenty, I'd be here three days a week and spend two days a week in the Capitol from mid, from March, sorry, from February to mid-March. Thereabouts. I had also, so during this budget cycle, we had also added in funding forty-five percent wage increase for me and J D each. That would have been predicated on a satisfactory performance review. I would waive a, a five percent increase during this fiscal year and not ask it go into effect until July if the council were to approve it. Payroll cuts leave us with seventeen hundred. That was an additional seventeen hundred. So all together with cuts and things, oh, so we spent money upfront for our part of our well project. And we got the, the water estimate done earlier this year. Because we paid that upfront, the state's gonna send us money back for that, that's fifty-four hundred dollars. We also have sixty-three hundred in contingency funds, so when you add all that up, it gets us to twenty thousand dollars. Now, next, we budgeted ten thousand more for road repairs than the final ARPA amount. So that would have. I think right now it's at like, let's see, it's. It's at forty-seven, or it's at fifty-seven, we pull ten out of that road repair budget. We're still using all of the ARPA funds just for street repairs. And then we add that, so that leaves us with thirty thousand dollars. So the final ten has to come from somewhere. Now, our budget surplus is going to be bigger than anticipated. So we can do one of two things, and that is either pull the final ten thousand out of our budget surplus or pull it or institute a water increase, water rate increase for during the, of the restrictions season. So those people numbers that I pulled up with, does anybody have any questions so far? No questions, but I know where I stand on that. So to you, ultimately, what I want guidance from in the council is what to put in a supplemental budget that we'll be presenting at the next rubber council meeting. And that is something that will be open, there will be a public hearing on a supplemental budget, and people can kind of voice their concerns again. Ultimately, I want to know tonight, how do we make a big, do we want to pull from the surplus or do we want to increase the, the water rate for usage of five thousand gallons?
Might be the surplus then. If I have a, I might see how to make your back, but not saying where I am right now.
Me, from a financial perspective, it makes no sense to sell water to, this would mean, so I live here, and not reperapture what we're selling this for. I mean, I don't agree with you, I'm from a business sense to. Not, I'm not gonna be able to put it up, but my brain's not working well today. It doesn't make sense to say, well, this is going to cost you five dollars, but it costs me fifteen. You know, as a, as a.
We didn't, we don't make money that way.
No, that's, and I think that, you know, are we, in this one, it's been, it looks like there's been a lot of massaging and working with the numbers and cutting back, shoot, take this cold linear to try and make these numbers. But now and ongoing, does it make sense for us to continue to sell water when we're having to pay so much for? And we're very blessed that we're not getting a three hundred dollars a run like we were before. And that we have, and we've done so much, we have the water meters that tell us when there's a leak. I mean, I think we're trying to do everything, but, you know, we're close to the market this time, but I think ongoing, we need to reevaluate. It does not make fiduciary financial sense to continue to sell a product at a lot less than what we pay for.
And so I agree with you on that. My pushback is, is that we've gone all summer and here we are in the fourth quarter, and we're gonna slam our citizens with these huge bills for one month. Right? And my thought is, is I do think we need a rate increase, but I think we need a rate increase on our, on the city's water so that we're making the money before we go into restrictions so that we have that money in reserve to make these. Because, I mean, I don't know if it was to take these T's, but, you know, I mean, our bill would jump to over three hundred dollars. And so like, I get it, but for one month to get hit with that nine cents, I'd be okay with like doing a, a five. A set like a, a three if I had done, moving on up, it's not quite the nine. I mean, to immediately get. That's where I'm at, like, for this fourth quarter, it's almost like because of our, I'm gonna use the analogy of our mismanagement, I don't think our citizens should be held accountable here at the last minute. This is something we should have been addressing, especially the pot water users, like, I, when the restriction started, and I didn't think of the penalty. I mean, that's, that's my opinion, I agree with you. Good business is not selling stuff for cheaper than you bought it for. But you also don't do that at the last minute to people, and so I just, that's kind of where I stand. And not willing to negotiate, I want to do where we're at to come up with that. But I just think he needs to do, for next season, he needs to make some, some difference in moving to where, so that we're making more money on our bill water. So that we get that money during the movement this time, people have to kind of look at.
That's all we did in the day. I mean, we already raised thirty, five, seven, eight years.
What I did realize though, we raised the base rate, and then we did manipulate the tiers.
We did enough.
We did, but random kind of aside, but we did.
Yeah, yeah, you know, increase.
You know, and, yeah, 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 for sure.
You know, if you look at our overall water rate, it's already one of the most expensive, you know, I am, you know, cause I have one down. You know, most other cities have water, they bring around, you know, sort of sewage and, you know. Yeah, so, you know, if you look at just airborne water, I mean, we're already at the top of the, top of the list, right? So. Yeah, what really bothers me is that, you know, we've been trying to tackle this water issue for a number of years before a lot of other communities were having the same issue. We've had opportunities to try and take care of it. I mean, even since Alex has been here, we've been trying to get this thing resolved. And we're not much further along than where we've been, right? So that's my biggest issue, is that, you know, this is something that we should have done a little sooner than where we're at right now. And to Dean's point, and then your point too, that nine cents. I don't think it's going from last month, right? As you said, I think this is considering going forward. This, this last December is not really gonna make that much of a difference for us. So, you know, I mean, I don't think that was the intent, right?
So the figure of, that we use came up with seventy-five hundred dollars per month. While this is in place, we could get an additional seventy-five hundred dollars per month in water revenue. If we moved up to nine thousand, so two nine cents per gallon. And then the idea would be after two months of that, we would be at fifteen thousand in addition to what we already budgeted.
For twenty twenty-three and first part of twenty twenty-four.
That's correct, so we'd look at it this month and probably in January. Cause it's very possible that, you know, the wells.
You know, mother nature. Did I read this correctly, that there's only one person that's going over that right now?
So, yeah, so that data did not end up being complete. So I, I put together those numbers four days, four days before the end of the month. So that Monday, the meters were red, and then that Thursday, the meters were red. And in that, that last four days, a number of people did end up going over seventy-five hundred in that, that, that short window of. They were close, it was like, ah, they're probably okay, but then in those last three days, they just missed a bunch of. So I think it ended up being more like ten.
But the nine seems accurate, then they over five though, right?
Yeah.
And this is basically in response to the community saying, don't shut off our water. And it's like, as long as we have access to water, you know, if we get closer to what we're actually having to pay for it, that makes sense in fairness to me.
This would affect twenty percent of city users.
And I, you know, I, I forget about my own budget that I had and my businesses at home, I hate to take reserves, because what if? I mean, that, that kind of, you know, what reserves do we have if the tree falls on the council thingy here and we need to fix it? I, I think it's important to have reserve funds for the, we don't know what's gonna happen, so to use those. The water makes me worried.
Yeah. If by the end of November, we had spent more on water hauling than in total we had received in water revenue. So all the money that's supposed to come in to pay for everything else in the water programming, all of it has gone to water hauling. And we've had to find them from elsewhere to pay for stuff. It is, it is a true imbalance, because this, we've simply just spent more money on water hauling than we brought in to pay for the water to get here. And as a result, a lot of other things are going down to be cut, because that top twenty-two reviews just is not reducing their water usage by as much.
We're, we're lucky that we can bring water in, because I forget which, which cities, it starts with an H, here, there, that. I mean, our captain, that's it, right?
I don't know which one, but.
It's one of the agents, so I mean, I think we've learned that we have that, and, you know, some of us are really crazy when it comes to, to trying to wash water. Not, not everybody is.
Yeah, I know next year we can be smarter about this. Twenty-two to twenty-three ended up being a very, very nice fiscal year for us, because we budgeted sixty and we only spent thirty-five. So we figured, okay, with crease in conservation, we got these new water meters that are doing better, sixty doesn't seem like a bad number to keep up with. Next year, we're going to run a war budget, that budget is going to be prepared to take on something this big. What we're gonna have to do is negotiate earlier in the year with our water hauler and figure out how much she wants to have received for her services. And then we break the budget accordingly, we increase the amount of revenue we can expect. And we increase the amount of money as a result of the new rate that comes in. There are other things we'll do to make sure things get done a little better, but.
Nothing we can do about mother nature.
No, not really. We did have a meeting with our state representative, Jamie Kate, last week. And we let her know about the problem we're having right now. And we asked if she would be willing to work with us to get sixty thousand dollars for us to use next year for water hauling. Since we're hopefully on track to get the, the new well completed by the summer of twenty twenty-five. Basically, if everything goes right, we have just one more year of this, and then we don't have to worry about it again. So.
Where do they are, from, from?
The federal government.
And are they pretty much? I mean, how do they help you use, what's the structure?
Oh, there's a massive list of projects you can use that for. We used part of it to pay for our new PLC, and the rest of it we're going to use for road repairs maintenance. And there's like a hundred different things you can use it for.
Well, water.
Um, they want infrastructure is kind of the, the thrust of it. I, I could look on the list to see if they would allow us to use it for water hauling during the fiscal year. But during the budget cycles here, we, you, we decided to have the rest of that ARPA funds be used for street repairs of it. So.
I, I may be wrong, but totally, so looking at this, one of the ones that did this before, and we did that several days with the ARPA.
Yeah.
And it wasn't, we couldn't, and I think you definitely see that it was, it landed right from.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's a very long list. One of them is cash assistance, like you can literally just give it up. Everybody in Sunday will get a portion of the forty-five thousand you've got left. Let's see.
I would look at that.
Yeah, everybody would get that. There we go, every city resident would get a hundred twenty-seven dollars and twelve cents. Basically, that is. We can chase the roads. Yeah. So making sure that we do dedicate money to roads is pretty important. That's next to water.
It's taken a long time ago.
Yeah. So there are a lot of other structural changes that we recommend that we make to the budget next year. We've been kind of working off one that's been used for several years that wasn't using the best data and didn't really reflect, I think, the best possible use of the funds we were getting. So next year, you can expect the budget that I, I produced to be a lot different than we have now. To make sure there's much more dedicated funding for roads. And water funds are a lot more closely tied to the actual water revenue. Because our old general fund revenue is kind of backfilling everything else we do. And especially right now, our reserves have really been paying for everything, because we have been spending more money in the water hauling than we have been bringing in for water now.
It seems that everybody's spent two dollars for the base. And in long range, there's a lot of people that for a long time have really been converting. And so it could be these people that save another hit. You know, some of the people that are using ten thousand gallons of water, they're the ones that are putting this on their hands. You know, they're the ones that are causing so much water to dry and, you know, you know, back when we did the last increase. But we then, on top things, we'd have looked at that. You know, they've slowed down, we started, started the new rain, and then started to buy the water, starting the new rain. Is that everyone? They did increase the sound, we didn't know how much the possible share of water at that time, we couldn't put it to a point, so that how much they want to hear. We did like a percentage, like two percent, but we didn't, and, and so we're just, we're moving like that fifth, that's more point, just a little bit. You know, instead of like doing. And so, I mean, I, I mean, I agree with you, Jeff, too, I just don't know. It's only by the ones that never slowed down using water, I'm sure we all agree, because I mean, nobody else. It struggled to try to make it count where we could, you know.
There's one little profit, actually, the other day, this is the longest from my shower to my water heater. And I get two and a half gallons as I'm trying to use my water in my shower, and then I go and I water my printers or I clean my rain barrel. I mean, I need my, my water that I've taken. You know, like everything to try and save water. But I know not everybody does, we had some comments from people before you. Yeah.
Yeah, we want to be prepared that we need to be trying not to increase the water. Well, that's, it is, and now we're, that's right, we were so careful raising a little bit, that like, that we got a reason why, that a quantity will be. Well, not necessarily, I mean, for us staying on it with that eighty-five hundred, you know, but, I mean, it's amazing how quickly and I don't have that. And also, it doesn't change much, but the nine cents is already, that, that's one, but. Yeah, each month, Ray, oh, another day. So like in August, three, six, nine, ten days in August, eleven in November, or is that September? Eleven in November, twelve in, in November, or again. One day extra hauling each, so like, that nine cents was over the last month, so like, we can't, it's like a generic number. If this month that water goes out and Ray won't call us, we're not paying your nine cents a gallon. You know, cause when I went to the city, pretty much a base unit is, I can get the full amount, but, you know, it's a base, middle base rate, we got paid a hundred and twenty-five. We're paying five dollars and forty-eight cents for seven hundred and forty-eight gallons, so that's pretty much for paying twenty dollars roughly to fill a raised truck up for a run. And he's charging two, two, and it's gonna be three, or forty-eight, hundred and forty-eight. Like three things on them, so we're at three hundred and fifty dollars per run, you know, so it's every, every two hours, seven fifty, fifty bucks. You go like, yeah, we're gonna reevaluate this, add through one truckload. What are we paying? It's hard to calculate the base rate, because that base rate gets divided up by how many truckloads you run, but I think the more accurate number, I think we should do, like we're gonna raise it on people, is what's a base rate on one truckload? Because the truckloads are gonna fuck you late per month. So I mean, you're tampering with anyone, at the same time, a lot of the cities lose money, but it's kind of like at the end of the game, not reiterating. At the same time, a lot of the cities lose money, but it's kind of like at the end of the game, not reiterate what I said earlier is. Like now we're in emergency and like, all right citizens, time to workout, you know, and. Uh, yeah, for sure. Um, I don't know how we, how we approach that. That's why I said pull from surplus. And we're even streets. I mean, we could pull another. Can't own streets.
I don't think there's another ten in the streets. I was, I was curious, but you earlier you said talked about surplus and you had an idea for where else to get it.
I'm just thinking somehow of how we can maximize. Year before to make the money on early water, you know, cause right now we're at. Thirty eight dollars and JD recommends eighty nine for the second tier. So I mean, that's a job that matters. Like we did something in the middle. I think I calculated that three cents, three cents a gallon, from twenty five hundred to five thousand. That was like. But it gets a plug.
I, I guess I don't understand. I mean, I. When you're, when you're talking about we pay truckload for the water at lemon, that's the actual product itself.
They sell, they sell it by a unit, so seven hundred and forty eight gallons per unit. And so that's five dollars and forty eight cents. Raise truck hold roughly forty five hundred for an alley or easily. So forty three hundred, so whatever seven forty eight goes in forty three hundred, three or four times, right? So. Five times that, that's thirty dollars per truckload, but calculating then right on top of that.
Yeah, which, you know, anything, it would be nice to pay the wholesale because the product rates for anything. Look at all the taxes and all this stuff. I mean, I think with the hauling, first of all, we're a heck of a lot better than we have been as far as rates because. We drought or whatever was hectic and we're not having to pay the insurance for the vehicle or the pay. I mean. I don't think it's exactly good to compare the actual cost of the liquid water versus what it costs to get a truck.
Well, our water bill this month in total, just the actual water is two thousand.
Well, problem with the trouble too, we're blessed to have Ray with us, but if Ray doesn't haul next year. And then we make this adjustment for the nine cents now going into next season and then that rates even higher and find ourselves in a. You know, for definitely not again, because. You know, something crazy happens, you know, the, 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 the hour raise those are up or that the water taxes build up and we definitely. For that and then we're going into adjust again. Um, that's. I, 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 I don't.
That makes sense. And that's why our, the budget that we write for this next fiscal year is going to be done, uh, with planning for basically this to happen again. It's not gonna be, hey, let's hope that's, you know, sixty thousand or whatever. Let's hope that, you know, we get the money. Uh, unless I see the money in hand before the budget is written, we're not going to plan on getting any support. And we are going to plan on this happening again and we are going to make sure that we have enough water revenue coming in to pay for. Uh, the water hauling without digging into our reserves and that's going to involve necessarily earlier negotiations with Ray. Uh, making sure we know what his number is gonna be and being prepared to charge that involved, letting people know very early. It's gonna be a lot more expensive this last year we had to do this. Um. You need to plan for it now or you need to plan for just using less water because, uh. Money's not gonna be there and we can't keep digging into our reserves year after year because that's how you lose all your reserves.
Well, that's not what I'm gonna suggest. It's just, yeah, temporary thing we get. Back on our feet so that we can adjust. I just don't wanna make a hasty reaction when nine cents is like, I'm not okay. With this.
But you, you were saying that nine cents you don't feel comfortable with, but if we do nine cents, it might be more next year.
Well, what I'm saying is not no jump straight to nine. Like a three, a three penny increase on, on every tier. Close. So right now, tier one is. Eight, zero, one, six. So that would jump to three, that'd be three cents, five thousand two. Then back where we don't tie, then nine, three more cents, eight. Three more cents to the eight dollars and the math that has been housing the, the twelve, twelve thousand gallons. Cause what it is, they're, they're hitting more money from the pool. It's not hitting you as hard, but you're making more money. Between the five and ninety five hundred, but they're the most population of the city. So I mean, they're the eighty percent using less water. Why are they getting the discount? And then the people. That some of us have a larger family, you know, like we're in it. I guess what I'm saying is we're in it together. You know, instead of just hitting, uh, those next tiers, like we all gotta break the bullet needed. We're not changing the, the base rate at forty seven. Just those next ones up. So what about at least you're.
Um, charging a little bit more throughout the year on the high end. And I thought it's the people that I do. Thirteen hours. Twenty five hundred and we do all kinds of stuff to stay there to help out the city. So I don't want my bill to jump. When I've been putting that thing about, but I don't want your bill to come to the end of that. You know, and the thing that's here is the problem is the high end. So even after a lot of restrictions over, I think that they need to be at a higher rate.
I agree, I agree. The ones, the few that. Were using, you know, like ten thousand plus gallons during our restrictions. Yes. I think even when we were watering our garden in the summertime, we never went over ten, but Alex could probably help. But I mean, that's. Not six raised, that is by fifteen feet long and to not use over ten. Um, I was surprised though, we're right at seven, you know, we have also fours. So like. I don't go, we're like right there at the verge, I guess, of getting the water shut off every month, but I was, I was shocked cause I look at my bill. Every month to see where I'm at.
There was one person with three gallons of it.
Um, I don't know, I mean. You guys, you gotta know where I can do a thing about it, but you need to kind of.
It had the key, it's a good idea to figure from the get go, are we charging enough water for water? I mean, we've been hesitant to even up to that two dollars, whatever we did last night, our forty five to forty seven. Is that a reasonable fair number? If we didn't have a disaster and everything went well and people, is that. Fair? And I don't know that we can, we can compare ourselves with every other city because we're very, we have no income. Otherwise. We don't have a lot of businesses. Funny, Halsey was telling me, oh, we're just like soda dogs. I'm driving through Halsey and seeing all these stores and banks. It's like. I'm so, we're not.
Well, the schools actually significantly cut down their water usage and they're looking at alternative water sources for their campus. They're getting assessed during that kind of thing. So as, as I've talked with them, they're, they're already making some very drastic changes. They're. They're cut since we let them know last month, like this is getting really bad. They cut almost fifty percent of their water use like.
So should they be paralyzed?
Um.
Well, then why should I be penalized? Yeah, they have.
You know, they raised the rate longer too. You know, the thing is, they don't expect with Tony is the person that's. You know. With I believe in that, it's not helping the city out. The city all end up going broke and he's gonna have to find different water supply. For a lot of the things, understand that we're trying to keep this afloat to keep our. Water to be part of.
Yeah, cause we don't have any real property if the water goes down, pardon still being a house, if you have no water.
Yeah, I'm trying to Kentucky. Now, none of them have wells, they have suburbs on their property, so I'm gonna go fill up a. Um, considering the one. Resident that you and Jamie made a deal with.
Yeah.
Um, did he pay him the drop price?
Yeah.
Paying nineteen hundred bucks.
Nine cents per gallon. He cut his bill like almost in half after that first month of sticker shock. It was like, oh.
So, okay, so was that nine, a nine cents?
And you know, it's not meant to be primitive, it's meant to be real and it motivates you to stay. And you know, restrict yourself, that's better. Same thing with, you know, reading gas. Are you gonna have a gas pump or are you gonna have? Something that doesn't, that's your choice. If you wanna pay for it again, as long as we have access to water. But anyone wants to pay for it, I think that's much kinder and better than it's gonna be five hundred you stop. No, you can afford it. Or power to eat.
You know, we are, after we were one citizen, you're helping us out, you know, with this other thing, but. Is that something to wait?
We've talked about that.
Yeah.
So you try to pay, pay it and be cheaper there. It's like license fee, 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 yes. Their capital assets, entire command, that's other guys, that's still cheaper than a hundred grand a year of water.
Um, I wouldn't think so. I don't know.
And then I guess I will, I will throw years of truck by can, I don't wanna cost, but it's, it's going, it's not cheap.
Then at JD's time. So who's gonna do the one struggle and they go, yeah, so you get, then it covers that.
Well, we, we, this is, this, these are like the numbers. You might not have time to schedule it now, but if you become the driver, we have an extra day to shift between paying boards, but in the long run, so. Well, we, we run this for three days a week. Then this is another.
Couple of days or a day or.
Yeah, whatever. Uh, cause we've been told, supposedly he said that we've been hauling water for twenty years. But we've been spending sixty plus grand a year on water for twenty years. You have that up, you can't tell me that not owning the city, owning its own truck, won't pay for itself already. Or get by in the truck. He was telling that when you're done with it, when we get the well done.
Well, you can use it for fire protection as well.
Yeah, yeah, um.
Use our funds for that.
Yeah, I know the water, but, um, you know, like I say, I mean, proportion, we couldn't do that, you know.
Cause what was no problem, we did the, the bid, it was like.
It was a lot, yeah.
Whatever it was, it was a lot more, so.
Some stuff that happened, I mean, not even that, right?
Yeah.
Twenty two fiscal year, we spent eighty five thousand dollars on water.
And, and you know. I'm a realist and I'm really, really praying, hoping, wishing or anything that reaches that we actually get everything in general in twenty twenty five and. We're okey dokey. But whatever. Whatever, so. You know, I, I, I'm hoping that we just have another year of water hauling. That would be awesome. Yes. Well, we, we haven't spent a lot of time fixing stuff from the past.
Well, you're, you're gonna see the work plan presented by Business Oregon at the next city council meeting. Our Business Oregon and our legal counsel have provided us information about the best way to move forward. And how they expect it to be done, you know, the, the very first thing we need to do is get a surveyor on retainer and. Get him in a room with Ray so the two of them can talk about just how much of, you know, his property is gonna be used. They can write a legal description, description for an use and there's a purchase option. And then, um, then we can actually go, okay. Um, and then, you know, we did a, a good chunk of the money that we've secured this year, that about million dollar amounts is. Um, for project management and engineering. So we'll have a professional in the room who knows how to get this done, it's done before. Um, so. You know, we're, we're on track to, uh, to get a lot of this done. We just need to make sure that we're sticking with the plan and that plan is something that Business Oregon and our legal counsel have both laid out in the last month. And we will lay that out publicly in December so we know, here's what is expected of us, here is how much money there is. Um, here's the pieces that fit together.
I mean, I, I totally feel and understand the frustration from the community. This is the whole reason I'm on city council is when I moved here seven years ago and they said, hey, you're gonna get a ticket for walking to the front. And I'm like, why? Come to find out the water restrictions, I had no idea when I purchased my property. I'm talking to the other citizens, they're like, oh no, this is done under twenty five years. What? I mean, I didn't find out about this until works have a few bottoms, so you know, you guys have water problems.
Also supposed to be have these, they're leaving for that report that.
Yeah. So, um, aside from thirty thousand in cuts and other things. How do we wanna make up the last ten? This is also what I need to hear from everybody today. Do we want to? Um, do we want to pull from surplus? Do we want to move it up to nine cents per gallon? Uh, for everything above five thousand? Do we wanna use a different, uh, number and structure altogether as has been presented and proposed? Okay. Well, yeah. Okay. So with all of the cuts and everything. That leaves us with an end of the year cash balance of sixty four thousand. So. Um, and that is with, um. With a ten thousand, just pulling it from the surplus. So if we don't pull from the surplus, it'll be seventy four thousand. If we do pull it from the surplus, it'll be sixty four thousand.
The, the thing that worries me too is our infrastructure and all.
Yes.
You know, only use a couple of really big water main breaks or, you know, something like that. Or hopefully we won't have a level of let this come through in the water and the one that we're hauling, they're gonna mess up, you know. System and. And, and I brought this up earlier and just have a little bit, I have not even talked to the auditors before about. I just would wanna check before we do anything on cutting your time. Um, my, my favorite reference is always only in other states, so I have no idea. Then the other state. If you cut somebody's time, you have to cut their, um, accrual and stuff. So I just don't want us to step onto that. And anything, so.
Yeah.
Wanna make sure before, I mean, it's a great offer of yours. I mean, it benefits you and it benefits the city. But I would just make sure that we're on track for that.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, yeah, I can check with our accountant to see if she knows of anything that would affect payroll and that is. See, I, yeah, what I, see, I can get a call. See what, what might be a problem or not.
Well, I really, I, I don't like the idea of, of going into the budget, so, but I think the.
Oh, actually, so the end of the year cash balance, uh, if we do make all of these cuts, then I'd recommend it would be. Sixty thousand two hundred and that includes using ten thousand to pay for. Sixty thousand two hundred, and that includes using ten thousand to pay for water, so not sixty four, sixty thousand two hundred.
I think.
Yes. Um. Yeah. Um, you know, there's. We will be exercising fiscal restraints due to, through the end of the year. Um, you know, for our twenty three through, um. Remember, the. For twenty two to twenty three, our projected any fund balance was sixty six thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Our actual balance was two hundred six thousand. Um, which is why we're able to rework our budget like this. So, I, I think a, a much higher number than sixty is realistic as long as we exercise fiscal restraint. And if there is a revenue increase. Throughout the year, I think that is doable.
Again, I, I don't like the idea of taking out of our surplus for length of the word, but I could see. For this time only, since it's the end of the year, I mean, I wanna be cognizant and fair and transparent. But it's only gonna be for maybe a month or so. To maybe have a less than mine, but I think ongoing, we need, we need to hammer in all these rates, especially for high users.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, during, even when, um. Last fiscal year, um. Water, the end of water hauling and the end of water restrictions weren't the same period. Um, I think we were in water restrictions like a month or two after we stopped hauling, it's just that water wasn't producing. We just weren't in the, the range where we needed to bring a bunch in. So. If we're, if we're keeping it open for another couple of months. And is it nine cents? You know, that helps recoup the costs from. Uh, the water hauling that resulted from these high users. Um. Seventy five hundred is the killer, I think, is the. Yes, but because, um, it has been a little more difficult to enforce than anticipated. Um. You know, given again, like this last month, last week, a bunch of people who were below and that these have a bunch. Um, and. Very close to my church. But yeah, that, that seventy five hundred plus is still. You don't want us, you know. Fricking all the money for us.
So in the interim, in this short term period. Um, we had basically put it out there that, you know, seventy five hundred was a cap, you should, you know, do a, um. Permit and see, you know, if there was a, I think the right words, but you see if there was a need to go with it, but. Um. You know, maybe, but then we talked about five thousand on this, which is double what the base rate pays for, that's. You know, but the average family, that feeding out probably uses closer to maybe four thousand, five thousand. Um, I think definitely the seventy five hundred, maybe. Tell me stuff out there, maybe do it to seventy five hundred and, um, but nine cents. And we sit and we reevaluate if here is.
Yes. I, I've got that. Yeah, I, there. There are alternatives, you know, if somebody's really worried about, you know, taking showers, you can get a gym membership or something, but that one, if they're taking a shower. Like.
Get married, maybe.
Um, they like work. You know, maybe. This can be kind of a few more problems than anything, her illegal water out, it shouldn't be five hundred.
Yeah.
I would think that if they go over seventy, seventy hundred charging. You know, don't fill them off. Without a rate, I mean, you are over, they're gonna be in a higher rate.
And I think, you know, because. Some people aren't gonna anyways get here, do their permit and to negotiate whatever, just have it as standard, announce for the city, if you go over seventy five hundred. This is what you're gonna go there on.
Everybody who went over seventy five hundred this last month was made a permit, so they can fill it out and give it to us.
But that permit does what? It's sixty bucks.
Well, yeah.
But the cost of water is that, that permit came in just. So you could get a permit and wash your car during the instructions for a day if you wanted, it wasn't meant to be this, so. I think that needs to go away, and I think it's seventy five hundred for the people who want, I mean, you pay to play. If you want to use that much water, awesome. You're just gonna pay for it.